Okay, we're good. All right, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the M D of Tabor's regularly scheduled council meeting, May eleventh. We'll call the meeting to order. Councillor Bruin won't be attending today. Councillor Croson and Haug are both on their way. Construction on the highway slowed down Councillor Croson. I would also like to welcome all of our staff who's online today. Have an agenda in front of us? Anybody have any changes I'd like to make to the agenda?
I can accept the agenda as presented.
Okay, Murray's given us a motion to accept the agenda. All in favor?
In favor.
Carried. Protocol items, I guess first of all, we'd like to give a little bit of a shout out to our staff who helped prepare and arrange the annual general meeting two weeks ago, and those who participated that evening. I don't know if anybody has any comments, any from council or administration, on how they felt it went, what we can do better, what we would change for another year? Anybody?
Well, I hope we never have to do it that way again, Reeve Harris, but if we did, that was a very commendable way to run a meeting. And the staff did a great job preparing a movie version of where we're at at the M D. And for those who weren't able to attend, I hope that they'll go to the website or our social media and preview those videos. It really gives a snapshot of what the M D is trying to accomplish and where we're at at this time. So, thank you to the staff and to everyone who participated.
John?
Yeah, I'd like to echo that as well. I've had a number of comments from some of the people that did attend the virtual meeting, and they were very, very pleased with the videos. Thought they were very impactful and did a very good job of explaining what we do here. And I'd just like to commend staff for putting those together. It was very well done. Thank you.
Yep. Anything from staff, Arlos? You felt we could do different, or went well, or didn't go well?
To be quite honest, we haven't had a chance to sit down and review yet, but I too am pleased with, well, I saw the efforts the staff put into it. And I'm happy with much, and if not all, of what they were able to produce, so.
Yeah. Yeah, it went well, I thought. Okay, we'll move on with confirmation of our minutes from April twenty seventh. Any corrections or amendments to the minutes?
Just one that I noted, Councillor Bruin's name isn't on the list. So, just make that addition.
Okay.
And with that, I can move the meeting minutes of April twenty seventh.
All in favor?
In favor.
Favor, carried. Public engagement process. Anybody out there in the online world that wants to speak to council today? Hearing none, we'll move on. Anybody have any declarations of conflict of interest they need to express today on any part of the agenda? Okay, we'll move on. Consent agenda, we have some correspondence. The first one is from, let me just get that here real quick, from the town of Tollfield regarding the vaccine, COVID- nineteen vaccine provisions, and rolling it out in the rural areas. The second one is a letter of support for the R C M P. And that one is from the county of Saint Paul. I know it's been a while ago that I made a motion to write a letter, and then we had Jason Snyder make a presentation to us. And I guess I'm looking today to see if, do we want to send a letter addressing our concerns around the government's review of the R C M P and the Alberta Provincial Police Service, organizing a provincial police service? Anybody have any thoughts or comments?
I did get a chance to read this letter, and I'm in support of how they're, I guess, laying this out. I agree with, I guess, the county of Saint Paul. And I don't know if this is the right time. A number of years ago, I guess, when Alberta was flush with cash and able to do many things. I think, I really believe that there needs to be a review of policing, and not so much the R C M P, but just in how we deliver, how we deliver law enforcement in the province with multiple, I guess, levels of policing, seem to be chasing the same dollar, which is the speeding tickets, seatbelt tickets. And I don't know that we're tackling the tough things or concentrating on that. I just think keeping, I guess, providing lanes for each level of law enforcement and ensuring that they stay within them. I don't know that Alberta's ever done that. I think that could be money well spent. I don't know that reviewing the R C M P and trying to replace them with provincial police forces is beneficial at all. And I support this letter, for sure.
Anybody else have any comments or thoughts?
I do worry that's been one aspect that was missed in the review of what already good things are happening. So, I wondered if we could bring this out of the consent agenda and perhaps make a motion and discuss it further.
Okay. Okay, so we'll move that down to exemptions. Anything on the first letter, the vaccine rollout? Anybody have any concerns there? If not, I guess that's the consent agenda for the day. Somebody want to give us a motion then to accept for information, Lace, or?
Yep.
I can move to accept the consent agenda.
Okay, all in favor?
In favor.
Carried.
Sorry, Reeve Harris, with moving the R C M P County of Saint Paul letter out.
Right, yeah, I got that. You're okay with that, Lace? You'll make that modification. Okay. Next is upcoming meetings and events memo. We have tomorrow evening, seven P M., we have a meeting with the Tabor District Chamber of Commerce. Do we have any agenda items for that? Arlos?
Sorry, just to back up to the correspondence section of the agenda real quick. Just as a point of information for council moving forward, I think what I'm going to be doing, because there's a fair amount of correspondence that's going from multiple municipalities to the province or whatever it might be on multiple different initiatives. I'm going to start migrating those to council meetings as official correspondence, so that some of them, like, I don't know if all of them come through my email. I try to pass along as much as I can that comes through my email, but some of it comes through regular mail, some of it comes. I'm going to try and consolidate, quite simply, the distribution of those into our regular council meetings, if that's okay with council. And then that way, all of council sees what we're getting. Sorry to go back a step.
No problem. So, again, back to the Tabor District Chamber of Commerce meeting tomorrow night. What have we got for agenda items, Lace?
The town of Tabor would like to discuss Corn Fest, and that's all that's been added to the agenda. I know that you mentioned Merrill, and I did pass that information along to Anne from the chamber about the two items that you sent to me.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember what they were.
The new building, I believe.
Right.
The new chamber building, and then some initiatives for local businesses. Does that ring a bell?
How we better can support our local business or something like that.
Yes, so I did send those two to Anne, and she was going to add them to the agenda as well.
Okay.
I haven't received the agenda yet. She told me that she was going to send it Monday. So, maybe after this meeting, I'll reach out to her and see where she is.
Okay, so does anybody else have anything that they'd like to discuss with the Chamber of Commerce tomorrow night? I guess we can always just kind of go with the flow tomorrow and see what happens.
Reeve Harris, are we all going to be just on our computers?
Yeah, what do we want to do? Do we want to come to the Reeves' room, or do we want to just zoom in from home? What does everybody want to do?
My suggestion would be, if you can, zoom in from home. It'd probably be simplest and easiest to communicate, but.
Okay. And do we have a link, or is that going to be sent out?
Yeah, Anne will send me the link, and I will put it in your calendars.
Okay, sounds good. Then, on the other one, is the twenty sixth B R I D board meeting. Generally do this yearly, and they're looking for a time between nine thirty and eleven in the morning that we'd be available to join their meeting. Anybody have a preference? Were you thinking around ten, Arlos? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah.
The thought was perhaps ten o'clock.
Okay, does that work with everybody? And the same thing, just zoom in from home?
Yeah, similar to how we went with T I D.
Yeah. So, agenda items for that one, you've got that worked out with them?
Well, not yet. So, the agenda items, some of them will be similar to just the basic updates and goings on of the M D that we shared and exchanged with, for example, in our meeting with T I D. I was gonna get some feedback from council as well to see if there's anything additional. There's some Dead Horse Cooley-related items that I'm guessing will be on the agenda. And I was also gonna seek feedback from Richard to see what he had planned for his group. So, once I kind of have a better idea, I'll throw it out, and share with council so they're aware ahead of time.
So, we would have a meeting the day before that, another council meeting, wouldn't we?
Yeah.
Because they had proposed some land swaps or something, hadn't they?
Yeah, and I would assume, I'm guessing that would probably be on the agenda, at least for some initial discussion.
Right, yeah, okay. So, ten A M. on the twenty sixth. And there's no other meetings, or, Murray, you got something?
I just wanted, like, down Tabor where here we're doing drainage studies and whatever, I was wondering up that way if the B R D probably hasn't thought of it, or whatever, but some drainage study up that way for our floods being as Lost Lake was getting close to the highway there, if there's any, if they thought of any ways of diverting water further north somehow, but.
We can certainly have that discussion. Like I said, the drainage study down here started as a result of overland flooding and trying to find a way to get it drained out using the irrigation infrastructure. So, we could certainly put that on the agenda, add that one to the agenda, drainage, overall drainage study for the northern part of the municipality.
Yeah, and I have that here as something to include from our end.
Okay, sounds good. Any other meetings or events that we need to be aware of?
I'm just going to back up to the chamber one. Perhaps we could choose one or two of our videos that were done to actually show during that meeting, especially if we don't have a big agenda. Might be nice for them to see what we do. Even the public works one might be good, because some of them aren't as aware what happens really. So, I don't know if that would fit into Anne's plans, but nice to see.
Chamber and tourism and whatnot, we could certainly do the camping spot, little blurb.
Couple of those two videos, yeah.
Sure.
I just think they would enjoy seeing them, and sometimes if they're not put in right in front of people, not everybody watches.
The other one that we could do is SCAR notify. More people know, learn what it is and what it's all about. So, public works, camp spot. SCAR notify. Okay, thank you. John?
Arlos, I'm just wondering if Brian Pierce is on the, I guess, email list for Bridge to Food as that they have a Summit Plant-Based Foods and Proteins Europe coming up, May eighteenth and nineteenth, and it'll be virtual. I'm just wondering if, since we've had some changes in economic development, if Brian is now receiving these emails.
Brian, are you able to speak to that in more detail?
Sure, no, I haven't received those emails, no.
Would you like it if I forwarded them to you?
Sure, sure, you bet, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
So, that's May eighteenth and nineteenth. You're going to be participating, or?
Nope, I wasn't, but I thought I might be good for staff.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. Welcome, Levitt. All right, anything else, upcoming meetings and events? If not, we would need a motion to accept the events memo.
I can make that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
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 All right. Request for decision, non-bi-law A S B member appointments. The way I understand it is we need to by name, name every member who's been appointed to the Ag Service Board. So, that's just all we need, is somebody to make a motion outlining those, each member of council as a member of the Ag Service Board, okay?
I can make the motion to appoint councillors Tamra Mianega, Murray Reynolds, Merrill Harris, Brian Bruin, John Tricato, Levitt Haug, and myself, Jennifer Croson, to the A S B board.
Effective October organizational meeting, is that what? Or that's good enough?
Yeah.
Okay. So, Jennifer's given us a motion to appoint each member of council to the Ag Service Board. Any discussion, all in favor?
In favor.
We'll end up doing it again at the organizational meeting.
Right. Just need to remember in the future, got to specifically name everybody. Okay, nine point two, Shinnuck Arch Regional Library System Agreement. Arlos, you want to speak to this, or Jennifer, you're on that board, aren't you? Oh, Tamra's, okay.
So, I brought this to your attention in January when we had our meeting as a result of some challenges with city left bridge budget. And when they reviewed, they felt that at that time it would be necessary to amend the Shinnuck Arch system agreement. And they have outlined it quite clearly here. They've just aligned some legislation and noted some changes under the Libraries Act. So, just so that you're aware, all of the member libraries that are in the Shinnuck region have to be two-thirds in favor of this, representing two-thirds of the overall membership. So, if for some reason the city of Leftbridge chose not to be in favor, that would make us go back to the drawing board. They have the large membership just based on population. So, it is an important thing. I don't have really many other things that, just this was a cleanup document that aligned with the service agreement that they provide to all of the libraries in the Shinnuck Arch. And I'll just take this moment also to say that the Tabor Library has been without a manager for three months. And then, of course, all of our libraries have been struggling through the pandemic. The online usage, interlibrary loans, the services that are available online, whether that's taking a class, watching a movie, doing a Kindle-type of book, are higher than they have ever been. And so, I would like to commend, and it really highlights the importance of our relationship and service agreement with Shinnuck Arch and what they do to provide leadership and library resources to our area. So, I hope council will consider being in favor of this motion. And I'd happily answer questions before I make a motion.
So, the biggest changes to the agreement are just census or population estimates? Is that one of the big changes?
Yes, and then the fees, right, related to that? I guess this probably doesn't highlight the fees, but that's how it came about, right, to find all the different changes.
Okay, anybody have any questions? John?
So, there will be an increase in fees, is that right, or not?
No, in January, it was a reduction by five percent. And they manage that based on attrition and just streamline of the services.
Isn't our fee based on population, though? So, our population went up, so our per capita would change, or not at all?
So, our population changed, so our final fee isn't going to be still higher because it rolled back five percent.
Oh, okay.
But it is population-based. And so, for those who might use library resources in Vauxhall or Barnwell or Tabor, we pay for our residents' portion of Shinnuck Arch in those libraries as we do in our own member Hamlet libraries. So, when we, you know, discuss what monies are paid, we pay for all of our residents to be part. And Chant has a slightly different agreement, and that's just that their books aren't in the interlibrary loan system. They own their books. And that's a different date to have that long discussion, but it's just a different plan that they have.
Okay, any further questions? We would need a motion then.
So, I can make a motion that council approve the amended Shinnuck Arch Library Board System Agreement as presented.
Okay, any further discussion or comments? All in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Next is an offer to purchase another lot in Grassy Lake. Arlos?
Again, standard sales agreement. Pulling up the map, it's one of the commercial lots in Grassy Lake that's left. So, obviously, any time we see these move, it's a positive, positive thing.
So, that gets us down to about four commercial and four residential lots left.
I believe three residential lots left and four commercial, yeah. This map may just not have been updated at the time.
Okay. Well, that's what we built them for, was to get them sold. Anybody have any comments or anything regarding this offer to purchase?
We did make a motion sometime, well, not sometime, it feels like a long time, that we would move forward and see about lot development. As we see this almost at once a month, some kind of lot, how far will we be away from having other opportunities for lot sales? And I realize that's not quite the matter at hand, but it certainly highlights it for me.
Right. Arlos?
So, a couple of thoughts that come into mind with regard to that is that we are working now on finalizing the reclamation activities with regard to that area north of Grassy Lake, for which has been identified for future development. So, that needs to take place first, and we do need to obtain the appropriate certification from Alberta Environment. So, those are the activities we're taking on now. And I also believe Brian Pierce has been talking with our planning group to develop some development schematics, very preliminary, but conceptual ideas for what we could potentially see out there once that reclamation has taken place.
Right. I don't know if you've got the answer to this, but how many acres was this? And how many acres of land do we have up there where the old dump was that they're reclaiming?
I'm not sure in terms of what currently exists, but Brian Pierce could probably provide some insight on the acreage for future, if he's online. If not, I can very easily get that information.
Sure, no problem.
Back as well.
John?
I just don't want to say the wrong number.
How far, so if we give, is there a ballpark on when we might have, I guess, lots developed and ready? Is that a number of years away, or like, how long will this process take? Or is there an estimation?
Well, hopefully, the physical work for the reclamation is done this budget year. It's in our budget. So, hopefully, that's done this year after, and then after that, it would be just making sure we have our planning subdivision and then engineering I's and T's dotted to do construction. So, I would say twenty-four to thirty-six months.
Yeah. Seemed to run in my mind when we did this development about two years from the start of it, till they were actually built, if I remember correctly. John?
So, other than the reclamation of that old dump site, is there any other, I guess, hopes we'd have to jump through for other forms of government other than ourselves?
Not that I can think of. Anytime you do subdivisions, if it's within certain proximity to provincial highways, you're going to have to involve them in that regulatory process. So, yeah, there would be, there would be other government agencies involved. It's just part of the subdivision and regulatory process, yeah. Namely, Alberta Transportation. That's the first one that comes to mind.
But in this budget year, the cleanup of the dumps, the old site, is being taken care of in this budget year?
That's planned for this budget year, yeah.
Okay. Back to the lot sale. Anybody else have any further comments, or somebody prepared to make a motion one way or the other?
I can give you a motion that they offer to purchase for the lot forty-five, block forty-seven, Plan One Five One Zero Zero Five Five in the Hamlet of Grassy Lake, be accepted, and that the lot be sold to Peter Freezin for sixty-seven thousand four hundred dollars plus G S T for a total of seventy thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars, subject to approval of a development permit application entering into lot sales agreement, entering into utility account, closure within sixty days, and payment of the purchase price.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Opposed, it's carried. Next is Town of Tabor Annex Land. Compensation. We had a similar one to this one last year. And, Arlos, I'll let you explain what's going on here.
Very good. So, just as a, if there is a scenario where council wants to go really, really deep in terms of additional items that might come up or might not come up with regard to this intermunicipal matter, there is provisions to move into close if you feel like you need to have it there. That being said, it's a pretty straightforward request that Town of Tabor Administration has put forward. This came to council last year. The context was slightly different in that it was the first year that the annexation agreement was in place. So, they were slated to pay one hundred percent of the tax that they collected, which they did. They just under-collected based on the projection that was in the order in council. Year two, they're slated to pay ninety percent of actual tax that they're set to collect. So, they're requesting ultimately a similar arrangement as last year. But it still varies from the original order in council. It's my understanding that, I wasn't here at the time that that agreement was made or that arrangement was made, but it's my understanding that it was the intent of both. I believe it was the intent of both municipalities to do it on a percentage-based compared to actual, for the actual taxes that they're set to collect that year. However, at the time, the M G B requested and required a projected number.
Right. I think the intent was declining ten percent every year based on what was actually collected.
Yeah.
But they wanted a dollar amount affixed to it. And that's where the discrepancy keeps coming in, is what's actually collected versus what was projected to be collected when the agreement was signed. Does that make sense? So I mean, I think it should be ninety percent, eighty percent, whatever of the taxes that were actually collected, is the way I understood the agreement to work. It's just that the amount collected is different than what was projected at that point in time.
Yep, and to be clear with regard to the, the suggested, suggested recommendation that administration put forward, um what Merrill just mentioned is actually one of the alternatives. Um administration to put, this is kind of a convoluted issue, but um administration did put forward essentially collecting, collecting all of what they would be um. Sorry, having them pay the total of what they would collect this year. So we'd be reimbursing them the difference between what they would actually collect and what they were projected to collect. Simply because, um and I, I might sound um a little bit stubborn, but the order in council says what the order in council says. Right, the rest is um really an intermunicipal arrangement and discussion between councils. If they would like to see consistency with last year's arrangement, it's one of the alternatives. I want, I'm just going to the alternatives real quick. Oh, sorry. And that would be alternative two. That alternative would, would keep us consistent with last year's decision, but last year's decision was also to revisit it annually, so.
Whoops, John.
So the, originally, we wanted to have the agreement uh laid out in, in the way we're handling, we handled it last year and we're looking at handling it this year. The MGB wanted a more uh prescribed amount, I guess they wanted a, a dollar amount attached to each tax year, is that, is that the differences here?
That's my understanding, yes, the MGB.
So the, the intent and the, our MGB came back and, and made those changes is, or recommended those changes for the annexation to be completed, is that right?
They requested that those changes be, be made.
Right.
The with, with actual projected amounts.
So in that case, um I can give, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, I'll give you the uh option one, I guess, uh as a recommendation or a, a of council.
Would that be alternative one?
I know the one that's recommended there. Yeah, I guess the other, the uh council reimbursed the town of Tabor uh five thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents in relation to the twenty twenty-one compensation relative to the uh specified annex lands in order of council two seven five dash twenty nineteen.
Okay. Everybody understand the motion that's in front of us? Haven't you got, no? Any questions? All those in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Favor.
Opposed, that's carried. Next, we'll move on to bylaws, twenty twenty-one property tax bylaw nineteen seventy-five, third reading, Arlos?
So it's received first and second reading at the last council meeting and once um council gets to the point of uh doing and completing third and final reading, we will move forward with preparation of two thousand twenty-one tax notices.
Okay. Any discussion on the proposed bylaw?
Just uh, just a question, I guess, for the farm land regulate, like how the regulations and the regulated rate and how it's based off pro- it's based off the production value of the land, correct? Is that how it's kinda usually based off of then?
Um I would, I would defer to Brian Bedura to provide a little more insight on that. The, I, I apologize, assessment. I don't know the all the ins and outs of, of assessment regulation, so.
Good morning. Um yes, the, the assessment farmland is based on productive uh rates. However, those were the rates that were set in um the nineteen seventies, and I don't think they've been changed uh um since then. Um how, how those uh, any, any additional details, um I'd have to uh get some information and, and bring it back.
Okay, any further comments or discussion? The proposed um mill rate bylaw, in two percent increase in residential, two percent increase in non-residential, seven and a half percent increase in farmland property tax bill rates. Forty dollar minimum property tax.
I, I think of particular note too, from a overall collection of tax, taxes perspective, you are collecting less taxes this year than last year. Forty-seven thousand three hundred and eighty-seven dollars less than last year.
I have a question, just, just in going through the bylaw, and Brian, this question is for you. Um and this was just something, when I was looking at it, I kinda was playing with numbers and that kinda thing, so I'm just curious. So when you're looking on the final page of the bylaw, it says general municipal tax levy assessment and tax rate. My question is, is the, it's about the school taxes, so you have the Alberta School Foundation as well as the Holy Spirit Roman Catholic Separate System. The totals for residential um assessment don't equal, like so for example, the Alberta School and the Catholic School, that assessment, when you add those together, say for example, re- the residential don't equal the residential and the general municipal. So I'm just curious why there's like variances in, in that, or is there, is that number made up somewhere else? Or is it just, there's a certain percentage of residential farmland that is excluded from that tax rate for collection of school taxes?
Um I'm, I'm not sure if I uh.
Counselor Crowson, is your question asking why the, why the um tax levies are different under the different uh ASFFs, so that you have the Holy Spirit Roman Catholic separate regional division and you have different?
Not necessarily that, but the assessment values, so say for example, in the general municipal, the assessment value for residential is six hundred and thirty-six and et cetera. But in the Alberta School Foundation and the Holy Catholic one, the five ninety-eight and the thirty-seven don't equal the total of residential at the top. So there's a difference or a variance between each category, I guess, so I was just curious why the school taxes wouldn't be based on what our total residential is in general municipal. Does that make sense now?
Yeah, it, it makes sense. Um and without quickly doing some math on a calculator, uh if you look down at the Taboran District Housing, um their total assessment uh, uh one billion nine hundred and ninety million, nine hundred and eighty-four thousand compared to the general municipal assessment of one billion nine hundred and ninety-two million. There are certain residential properties that uh aren't subject to requisitions, and those specific uh residential properties would be um the, the properties uh owned by a, a lodge or uh the, so uh seniors residences are not subject to requisitions, so if our difference is, is about uh the same amount between the, the, the total Taboran District Housing and the total general municipal, that would be the explanation. And I can quickly uh add up and see if it's uh, that's the amount. If I have a calculator that goes into that large numbers.
When I was just curious, cause I was, when I was looking at it, I was like, well, that's odd, you'd think that all those numbers would, would be equivalent. But even in the um general municipal, like the school tax is a shortfall of six hundred and thirty-six million um for assessment, like versus the general municipal and then the school tax. And then the farmland, there's a difference of I think I have one million three hundred and nine thousand. But I'd have to go through the numbers again, I was just curious why the, they didn't add, or why we weren't taxing everything equally, I guess, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and uh the, the, the explanation for the residential is uh the um the properties owned by a, a seniors lodge um are not subject to requisitions, they're subject to municipal tax, but uh not requisitions. Um the other part on farmland, I may have to look into and get back to, I believe that the possible explanation is uh the, the grants in lieu. There. Yeah, I'll, I'll have to get back with the explanation on the second part with regards to the farmland differences.
Thank you. I just wasn't sure if there was like a black and white answer, so I just thought I would ask.
Okay, other questions or discussion on the property tax bylaw? Are we prepared to go to third and final reading then?
I can make that motion. I'll make, I'll make the motion to go to third and final reading for uh for property tax bylaw nineteen seventy-five, that uh do you want the key points read out? Just so it's recorded?
That's right.
Probably a good idea. Twenty twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one property tax bylaw nineteen seventy-five authorizes the levy of fifteen million four hundred and thirteen thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars in municipal property taxes, which is forty-seven thousand three hundred and eighty-seven dollars less than the previous year's twenty twenty property tax bylaw amount of fifteen thousand four hundred and sixty thousand dollars eight hundred and fifty-eight. The twenty twenty-one property tax rates reflect the following increases from the previous year's taxes, increase of two percent in residential property tax mill rates, increase in two percent of non-residential property tax mill rates, increase of seven point five percent in farmland property tax mill rate. Thus, I move the third and final reading be given to the twenty twenty-one property tax bylaw nineteen seventy-five.
Okay, any further discussion or comments or questions on the bylaw? All those in favor, in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Anyone opposed?
Opposed.
That's carried. Next, we'll go down to policies. Safety inspection policy, Arlos?
Yeah, just give me a second here to. So the next two policies on the agenda are uh policies that were identified when we went through our recent safety audit that we could uh establish and uh pass. The policies are more more or less policy statements. And what we will be working on, once the policy statement and policy is passed um is continuation of um depending on scenario, our existing procedures in terms of the safety inspection process and or enhancement of those procedures. So that's something that the uh safety program would, would work on and develop um once, continue working on and developing um once the, the policy is established. It was just identified that we lacked the actual policy, policy statements. So that would be for both of them, the, the safety po- safety inspection policy and the workplace incident reporting policy. And that's something that the, the Joint Health Safety Committee has been working on for um I know they're short policies, but it might sound silly, but they've been working on it for a couple of months now in terms of uh researching it and seeing what other municipalities typically typically adopt and adopting what they feel comfortable with as well.
Okay, so this is coming really from your Joint Health Safety
This is, yeah.
Uh committee?
Yeah.
And overall, your safety inspection this year went well, even though it wasn't a, it was more of just a I don't wanna say paper exercise, but it wasn't.
It, it was a documentation.
Documentation oriented.
Audit, but that's, given the current circumstances, that's the best they could do. Um and we did, I mean, it was an audit that we did pass. As a result, continue to retain our core certification. But there's still opportunities for improvement, and that's us following up on, on those areas.
Okay. Okay, anybody have any questions or concerns on this uh inspection policy? That's going to be added to your, added to your say um.
Health and safety manual.
Right. John?
I can give you a motion that council approved the proposed uh safety inspection policy as presented.
Okay, any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
And workplace incident reporting policy?
Similar, similar uh explanation discussion as as the last policy, it was a policy that was identified as lacking and not in place, so.
Comes from your Joint Safety, Health and Safety Committee?
It does as well, yeah.
All right, John?
Was this also a recommendation by the audit?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
I can move that council approve the proposed workplace incident reporting policy as presented.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Opposed, it's carried. Next, twelve point one consent agenda exemption, RCMP uh letter, whatever, we wanted to review it a little bit further. I think I've sent on most of these letters that have come to me, one was from Crowsness Pass, one was from the town of Oxl one from the county of Saint Paul, all basically saying the same thing, they support the RCMP in their area and are not sure why the provincial government is trying to push on with developing their own provincial police service, so we had a presentation from Jason Snyder, and again, that's probably been at least a month ago, if not even further back. And um just wanted to know if council wants to do anything further, such as a letter uh supporting the RCMP or what your thoughts are on the table. John proposed that we talk about policing, review uh policing at all levels, review all levels of policing in the province, especially focusing on rural crime.
I, like, most of these letters are fairly similar. But I, I believe that if there's money to be spent, that to be the best place to spend it would be in reviewing how we're delivering um policing now, maybe not, uh but by reviewing the RCMP here to replace them with the provincial police force, I don't think is very beneficial, not a very good way to spend money when you don't really understand. At least I don't understand how, how these four or five different law enforcement agencies, I guess we've reduced one now because the sheriffs are now uh have taken over the uh vehicle inspection. So now they're all under one umbrella. But as far as that goes, um having a better understanding of how you keep these, these different law enforcement groups in their lanes and who, who decides that, like, and why haven't we, I guess, designed a system that is not so much overlap? I think we duplicate services here in, in multiple different places. When you can get uh, I guess, a speeding receipt, bill, ticket from four different law enforcement agencies in the same community doesn't seem to be uh very efficient. I just think it, there should be, if there's a review to be done, it shouldn't be on the effectiveness of the RCMP, I think they're doing a pretty good job. But I think we need to review who's reviewing all these law enforcement agencies and how we, I guess, keep them in their lanes.
Okay, any other thoughts? Jennifer?
Well, I think it would just be good to know why they wanna make this change, like I don't think that we've ever really gotten that answer. Um I don't know if I necessarily agree completely with multiple levels or disagree with, oh well, I think it's good to have multiple levels. Or disagree with, oh, well, I think it's good to have multiple levels of enforcement doing similar jobs in a way that everybody can't be everywhere at the same time. Because I mean, sometimes you could have somebody speeding or driving recklessly somewhere. But if only the RCMP can deal with that, then that's not really sufficient either, I think. I think it's good to see levels of law enforcement work together somehow, but I do. I think we need to have an understanding of why the change or what, where, where is it coming from and what's it being geared from? If we have these studies showing that it's not beneficial or that there's no desire from the population of Alberta to, to push something like this forward. Especially when we've elected this government to represent its constituents, why? Why the push or what's, what's the theory behind it?
Right, we had another presentation on Friday at Mayor's and Reeves from the National Policing Federation. And of course, everybody's done a survey, they've done one too, only thirty five percent of the respondents to the survey support a provincial police force. Eighty one percent of people were satisfied with the RCMP. And seventy percent oppose replacing the, the RCMP, but yet the government still wants to, still pushing down that street, so I I'm just, I don't know what another letter does, but at least they know that this municipality supports the local RCMP and that's my feeling, I don't know if anybody else has a feeling a different way, but that's my feeling, I think. We have a good relationship with our RCMP locally here and I think they're doing a good job personally, but, so, I guess, John?
There was supposed to be, the review was supposed to be complete on the end of last month, correct? So when is the report supposed to come out, uh, as to what the findings were? Cause they, didn't they hire, they hired some law firm to, uh, do the review? And, uh, I'm just wondering, we haven't heard anything about it. These, these deadlines seem to come and go and whoever hears what happened. So I don't know, uh, if that report's been finalized, I thought it was supposed to be released at the end of the month. That's what I understood to be, uh, when it was, uh, first laid out by Ministry Madu.
So we haven't heard, um, I haven't heard, it could be, could be the case, I haven't heard, but we can, if council is, uh, looking to to develop that correspondence, we can definitely make that known in that.
Is that, is that everybody else's understanding too, that it was supposed to be the end of April? Or is that just me?
No, I believe that was the case, but they did say that maybe not all findings would be reported, that they were gonna have a, a review in council and then they would let people know, and so that's always a concern for me. I think, uh, I'm supportive of, again, asking the why, like Counselor Crowson said. If we could be proven that there's a cost reduction or, and improved service. I would be interested, but right now the RCMP are providing an excellent service where we receive reports. And like anybody, they would like more people to do more things, but that comes at a cost, and I don't see how, at this point. A provincial police force can meet that with the same budget, so I'd be in favor of writing another letter. Asking for the findings and a direct question of what was the rationale? To implement a provincial police force or, or research why a provincial police force should be in place.
So you're doing that by way of motion?
Okay, um, I, I request that council prepare a letter to the Minister of Justice and Solicitor General to express our concern and question on the rationale for researching a province-wide provincial police force. Replacing the RCMP and to receive a copy of the results.
That give enough direction, Arlos?
Yeah, uh, I mean, the, the if council seems to be in general agreement from the discussion, you could also, you can say as referenced in today's discussion. And we can, we can refer back to the discussion to include in the letter.
You got that, Lise? Good, okay, all in favor? Okay, thirteen, council requests for information and motions, does anybody have anything that they'd like to ask administration? For information for an upcoming meeting?
I have a request for, um, taxation information, just to if administration, and I can make a motion if I need to as well, but if administration could just even make a scan copy of our um, tax levy bylaw from the last eight years, even ten years would actually be good. Just for my own reference, I don't know if anybody else would like to see that, just to dive into the numbers a little bit more and see where we've been going and I think it's good to keep it in our back pocket, but even if we could just have a scan copy emailed to us, I don't know if it necessarily needs to come back to council. But it's up to you guys. Doesn't need to be done immediately, it's not time sensitive or anything, so I'll make a motion to request administration. Give a history of the tax levies from the task, past ten years, tax levy bylaws.
So that was by way of motion, any further discussion on Counselor Crowson's motion? All in favor?
Oh, did you have a question? Oh, okay.
Any other information that to request for administration from council?
And have we received the signed copy of the twenty twenty financial statements?
We have, and they're posted on the website as well.
Okay, and for those rape pairs who may like a hard copy, could we request a couple of those for them?
Yeah, we can accommodate that.
Okay, that sounds good, thank you.
Any others? All right. Concludes. The open portion of the agenda, so we'll need a motion then to go into closed session.
I can give you a motion to go into closed section.
Okay, all in favor?